Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Before we begin this meeting, I ask everybody, silence your cellphones. The Fort Bend ISD Board of Trustees, a meeting to open for the public to observe the board conducting district business. Therefore, the audience members may address the board during the designated audience item section on the agenda. If you have printed materials you want to give to the board members, you must provide them to the Board Secretary Jane Kaiser or to me, and we will provide them to the board members. We also ask the members of the audience be respectful of others, remain quiet during the meeting, so that everyone is able to hear the proceedings. For your convenience, microphones have been provided on both sides of the boardroom. Please speak directly into the microphone if you are asked to answer a question or address the board during the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Officer Antiveros. This meeting is called to order at this time at 6:27 PM. We have the presence of a quorum. This meeting has been duly called and notice of the meeting has been posted for the time and manner required by law. Will the audience please stand for the pledges of allegiance and remain standing for a silent invocation?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a silent invocation. You may be seated. Next on the agenda are recognitions. Dr. Dupree?
Yes, ma'am. If the board would join me in front of the dais, we will recognize outstanding students and staff from Fort Bend ISD.
Thank you, Dr. Dupree. Tonight, we are proud to recognize several students and talented staff members. First, we have two fifth grade students from Blue Ridge Elementary chosen to lead the pledges of allegiance tonight. Kamani Henderson and Hannah Rex. Both are role models among their peers and consistently demonstrate leadership at their school. Kamani was selected as a Blue Ridge Elementary Principal for the day through the school's new monthly writing contest. As principal for the day, Kamani helped interview a prospective teacher, completed a classroom observation, and mentored students during his day of leadership. Hannah serves as a Blue Ridge Student Council member. She was inducted in the National Honor Society for the first time last year and will be inducted again this year. Hannah is also part of the Majestic Gems Club at Blue Ridge Elementary, in which young girls learn to be confident and choose healthy lifestyles to help them achieve lifelong success. Thank you. Would you please join us as we recognize and congratulate Kamani Henderson and Hannah Rex? And if you are here to support Kamani and Hannah, please stand and be recognized. Thank you. Next, the Fort Settlement Middle School Honors Band was selected as a national winner in the 2016 Mark of Excellence National Win Band Honors Project, sponsored by the Foundation for Music Education. The Mark of Excellence Project is a competition entered by recordings, in which only the top quarter of all entries are selected as national winners. This year, 236 of the finest middle school and high school musical ensembles from 36 states entered the project. Please help us recognize and congratulate band students Jonathan Back and George Andrews. And their band directors Greg Countryman and Teresa Baragas, who are here tonight. And they are here, but all four are here to represent the Fort Settlement Middle School Honors Band. And if you're here tonight to support these talented students and staff members, will you please stand so we may recognize you? Thank you. For our next recognition, the Dulles Middle School Symphony Orchestra and the Dulles High School Honors Orchestra were chosen this year to perform at the prestigious 2016 Annual Midwest Clinic in Chicago. The Midwest Clinic is the world's largest band and orchestra directors conference with over 17,000 attendees from all 50 states and more than 30 countries. Selection to perform at the Midwest Clinic is based on a written application, a recording of the group's performance, letters of recommendation, and a portfolio of the group. Only a handful of musicians, musical ensembles are selected from hundreds of applications annually. Please help us recognize and congratulate the Dulles Middle School Symphony Orchestra, represented tonight by student officers Shawnee Chang and Chloe Chowdhury. And their directors Sally Kirk and Theodore Tally. We also want to recognize and congratulate the Dulles High School Honors Orchestra, represented by student officers Sharon Pearl Nath and Alexis Good. And their directors Michael Isador and Mary Beth Melvin. If you're here to support these talented students and their directors, please stand and be recognized. Thank you very much. Dr. Dupree, that concludes our recognitions.
Thank you all for being here. We will now move on to our audience items. Ms. Heliger will time the speakers. You will have three minutes to speak. You will be given a 30-second warning. First up is Dana Walker.
May I go ahead?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. My name is Dana Walker, and I've been working for Fort Bend Independent School District for the last 17 years as an educational diagnostician. I am currently here tonight representing the National Certification for Educational Diagnosticians. It's a certificate that has, that got started in 2006, and it's earned by an educational diagnostician that shows viability, distinctiveness of profession, and also provides quality and uniformity of practice amongst other diagnosticians. We benefit from the National Certification because we are given highly qualified status. We are allowed to use our nationally certified number, certificate number, after our name when signing reports and correspondence. We're included in online registries, so that we are not only able to connect with diagnosticians here in the state of Texas, but nationally, so that helps us out a lot. It also assures parents and schools that we have met rigorous standards of practice beyond what the state of Texas expects us to do. We are offered opportunities for ongoing professional development, and we are connected with current trends and issues, not only again for Texas, but for the national. Fort Bend is actually benefiting from having nationally certified educational diagnosticians in the district, because although we have to do our 150 hours to maintain our certificate in the state of Texas, we have to do an additional 150 hours in order to maintain our national certification in the areas of professional development, collaborative study, independent study, teaching, researching, and development, additional graduate coursework, and professional consults. We have access to wealth of information that we are able to come back and share in Fort Bend ISD with our colleagues. I do realize that educational diagnosticians are not in short supply. Although it is not hard to find a diagnostician and retain those, wouldn't it be nice for Fort Bend to have additional diagnosticians that have taken it upon themselves, when it is not in their job description or requirements, that we become more proficient and knowledgeable at that state and national level? Fort Bend ISD will benefit by having more nationally certified educational diagnosticians as possible. The higher expectations set for us sets us apart and brings more professionalism and expertise to our district. We are humbly requesting that a stipend be created for nationally certified diagnosticians as it was in 2013, and it is our goal that with this recognition from Fort Bend, that we would, we would create a repository information of all the information that we've collected nationally, and also to provide Fort Bend with additional staff developments, so that Fort Bend can continue to align itself to higher standards in the area of assessment.
Thank you for being here. Next is Min Zhang. I hope I said that right.
Good evening, everybody, and thank you for the opportunity for me to speak. This is a slightly different issue than most of our talk about. It's about a community. I live in the parentland area within Fort Bend County. This community for the last one and a half year has a strong odor, very unpleasant odor. Some people feel sick. This affects our ISD in two areas. When the school kids go to school in the early morning, it smells very bad, and even in exercise time, it's very bad. Secondly, the housing price may drop because there's problem, and that it's going to affect the tax to ISD. There are a few hundreds complaint toward the, we have this Texas Commission for Environmental Quality, TCEQ, and there is an analysis recently about this problem. It's pointed to a big landfill, it's called a Blue Ridge landfill. It's about couple miles away from this community. This community, by the way, another name is called Shad Creek Ranch, Shad Creek Ranch. We formed a local task force within the community members talking about, it's guided by the city of parentland. We had reported this to the, to the TCEQ, and the analysis pointed to the source, that landfill. There is some notice to that, but still there is some smell. It's, it's not fully taken care. So the, the community members are really nervous about this, and so this, let's go to various agencies seeking advice or leadership to help what to do with this, for example, like hiring a third-party lawyer to handle this. That's where I come here from, very new to me. Sorry if I just say things really out of order. Basically, it's about a community with odor from landfill, it affects the school and affects tax, and try to get leadership advice from you guys on how to, how we can handle this. Thank you very much.
Thank you for being here. Heather Hoskins?
Thank you, Dr. Dupree and board, for allowing me to speak today. I come on behalf of the Kickstart Kids Program, and I'm here to thank the board for allowing this program to coexist within the district. I'm a parent of, I'm a single parent of two girls who have been in the program, starting good seven years ago with my oldest, and this program has been amazing. My oldest is, when she began, she was not overly outgoing, little shy, definitely afraid of speaking to people. As her years progressed, she, and in entering into tournaments and working with, learning, learning the art of karate, and for me, it was for my peace of mind, being that she's four foot 11 when she started, she still is, and she is 18 years old. So the fear of a single parent was huge for me, and my whole goal in putting her in the program was so she could protect herself. Little did I know that it was going to be much more than that. She, the first time, a boy gave her a hard time. She came home, she told me about it. I said, "Well, did he eat the, did he eat the ground?" She said, "No, Mom." And I said, "Well, why not? I put you in karate, that's what it was for." She said, "That's not the way to handle it, Mom." So, first key thing is she didn't get my hot-headedness. She learned how to be calm, how to deal with situations. I'd love to say she learned that from me. She did not. Moving along, going through school, her, her drive, her self-confidence was amazing. Again, love to say that was all me. Yeah, it wasn't all me. Now she has graduated, she entered into the Army National Guard. Once again, daughter, four foot 11, oh yeah. But I did have the peace of mind knowing that she went through this program, had all of these leaders who inspired her, who drove her, who gave her the self-confidence to do this in the first place, and I let her go, and she has excelled there. Shocking, many of her sergeants, had many sergeants speak to her only because of her height, saying, "How tall are you? Oh, you just made it, didn't you?" And so the pro, and the family, there's a lot of kids out there who have family that isn't
Thank you.
real good family.
Thank you for being here. That concludes the audience items. We'll now move on to information. First up is conducting a public hearing for improvement required school, Krista McCullough Middle School.
Yes, Dr. Hill is going to conduct this hearing, and then we'll, we'll turn it back over to the board to hear any public comment. Dr. Hill?
Good evening, Dr. Dupree, board. Before I begin the hearing, I would like to recognize the principal, Mary Brewster. Ms. Brewster? And the Assistant Superintendent for Krista McCullough Middle School, Dr. Sochi Rodriguez. As we begin the hearing, there are some things that I think we need to know. First of all, Krista McCullough Middle School was in improvement required status according to Texas Education Agency until this past year, when the school made significant progress and exited that rating. And I would like to acknowledge that that did not happen without a lot of hard work, some very dedicated educators, and a focus on doing the right things for students. And I think as we progress tonight, you will see that they have indeed done a lot of work. I would also like to point out that while Texas is a very diverse state, and Fort Bend ISD is the most diverse school district in this very diverse state, that Krista McCullough is even more diverse in many ways than our school district. And because of that, the challenge of such a school is somewhat unique, and the improvements and the progress that they make are to be even more acknowledged. As we look at the economically disadvantaged comparison, and you'll note that this is through 1415 because the TAPER report, or the state's official school report, had not yet been released for 1516. This is a three-year comparison, and you can see that Krista McCullough has 82% free and reduced lunch. In comparison, the state has 37.1, and the school district 58.8. So indeed, Krista McCullough has a more challenging population than our state or our district. When we've talked about mobility, and I remember a couple of board meetings ago, Mr. Rice inquired about that, and he brought up that mobility is indeed a factor in school improvement, and it is. When students don't necessarily come through the ranks of our school system, and we have to meet them where they are, or by the time they enter a school, maybe they've been in three or four school systems, or out of state. And as you can look at this particular line graph, Krista McCullough just about doubles the district's mobility rate, and it certainly is significantly higher than the state's mobility rate, with 22.4%. Learning English is important, and we've seen the schools in the Willow Ridge feeder pattern change demographically, and those communities have become more diverse, and more second language learners have moved into the community. If you'll notice, that Krista McCullough went from 2013-14 to 2014-15 to 19.8%, almost 20% of the population was LEAP, Limited English Proficient, Learning English. Compared to our state, which is very diverse, and compared to Fort Bend ISD, once again, a more significant challenge, and that challenge continues to grow, but the staff and the administration embrace it. You can see that as we look at the progress, oh, here again, we're looking from 2013-14 to 2015-16. And you'll note that the black font indicates the state's target. Schools to meet accountability, they must meet either index one and three and four, or index two and three and four, and we'll go into those in a little bit more detail, what each of those indices mean. But you can tell that when we look at the progress, which is indicated in green, where the school either met or exceeded the state's target for that index, there's a lot of green on that page. And when we look at 2015-16, the school would have met every single index except index one, and they were only two points away from index one. So they clearly met the accountability standard of meeting two and three and four, and almost met every indices. Even though they are not improvement required, they must complete what is called a TACE plan. A TACE plan is the Texas Accountability Intervention System Plan. It's required for all schools that are in improvement, but also when a school exits improvement, they are required to complete the plan and go through the planning process and implement the plan as if they're still in improvement, to ensure that there's continued system-wide improvement at the school. They don't have to submit the plan to Texas Education Agency, but Texas Education Agency, at the end of the school year, will pick random schools that they will go ahead and examine the plan, examine the documents that indicate they have implemented the plan correctly. And the center of the plan is accelerated achievement, because we know that if a school has struggled with meeting accountability, we have students who are not quite where they need to be. And then sustaining improvement once it's been put in place. And we don't want to just teach to a test, or in any way prepare students to just get out of accountability improvement in a single year. We want system-wide improvement, and this diagram shows that we must work together as a district in the outer circle, that we must have all kinds of support systems to surround the school. The school is not set to do this improvement on its own, and that these critical factors encompass more than just academic achievement. Parental involvement, leadership, school climate are among the factors that must be in place. The TACE plan encompasses a problem statement, which indicates what was the issue? Why did this school not meet improvement? And that is data-driven. It didn't meet the target. And then what is the root cause? That's the why. Why did it not meet that standard? An annual goal is then set by the leadership team. This coming year, we anticipate that we will employ strategies that will produce this goal, this outcome. The state calls these strategies interventions, and each quarter, schools that are in improvement must submit intervention progress. Did you do each quarter what you say you will do? Even though Krista McCullough is not in improvement required, they must implement and must each quarter report on whether or not they've met the interventions. When we look at reading improvement, and this is an overview of what the school plans to do to improve reading, and you'll see some of these things repeated throughout the plan overview. For example, the annual goal is that 70% of the students would meet the state standard, and 60% of the students did not, passed, so that's a 10% increase. As you look at the root cause, this is what you'll see repeated over throughout the plan, that the school is going to be focusing not just on improving education for all learners, but below-grade level learners, students who are not working on grade level, special education, and limited English proficient. The last year, coming out of improvement, the school focused on overall improvement in instruction throughout the school, and focused quality instructional improvement. Now they are looking at specific groups of students that need additional support, and I'll highlight the reason for that in a moment. Also, a major strategy is repeated throughout the plan, and that's the use of professional learning communities. These are committees where teachers who are working in a content area or a grade level come together to plan for instruction and to plan for interventions and support that will meet the needs of specific groups of students. Here is the math overview plan, very similarly, 60% passing, 70% for the annual goal, and you see similar strategies that are in place, trying to more specifically plan for and meet the needs of special education students, limited English proficient students, and students who are working below grade level. Writing is the highest level of literacy, and it is the most difficult of the tested areas to impact improvement, because whereas in reading, we learn to decode and to get information and to comprehend information, we actually manipulate the language and express our comprehension in writing. So that's why it is the very highest level of literacy, and it's more difficult to attain a higher improvement percentage, and that's why you see 60%. However, if the school met this, they would still remain out of improvement required. You'll note that the cause was teachers lacked effective instructional strategies for teaching writing, so one of the focuses is on professional development. We also noted that writing is not tested in every grade level, and there was a feeling that there wasn't sufficient time given for students to practice writing, and that we needed to increase the actual practice of writing among students. needed to increase the actual practice of writing amongst students. When we were at the workshop last week for our listening tour, Ms. Tosin asked why we were focusing on special education and ESL students, or perhaps that was a question that she submitted prior to that. And I addressed that verbally and I've added these two slides to your board presentation. And what I would like to do is to give a little bit more detail about why Ms. Brewster and her leadership team have chosen to focus on these two areas and the below-grade level learners. First of all, last week I explained, and I want to highlight, that special education and limited English proficient students are not in our accountability group as a single group. These students may be special ed, African-American, and economically disadvantaged. Therefore, one student is accounted in three different groups. Therefore, by focusing on groups that are struggling the very most among our students, we are not only doing what is morally right and what is right from an instructional standpoint, but it also makes the most sense from an accountability standpoint. For example, when we look at this slide, special education and economically disadvantaged students overlapping, and this information is as of November eighth and was gathered by Dr. Guillory, who crunched the numbers for me, and I appreciate that. We have in our special education group, there are ninety-five special education students at McAuliffe. Ten of those students are not qualifying for free and reduced lunch. So of that ninety-five, eighty-five percent are also economically disadvantaged. And of those special education students, twenty-three are also Hispanic or Latino, seventy-two are also African-Americans. So there are those overlapping accountability areas that we talked about previously. When we talk about and look at the ESL students, we know that eleven of these students are both special education and English language learners. That doesn't happen very often because you have to be proficient in English to qualify for special education. So you don't see very many of those students overlapping both special ed and ESL. But eighty-four percent of our ESL students do qualify for free and reduced lunch. And most of these students are Hispanic, a handful are African-American. I'm very proud of the progress Krista McAuliffe has made. I'm happy that they are out of improvement required status. I am eager to see what the staff and students will do this next year. As I pointed out, this is a school that's very diverse and there are many challenges that the staff and students must overcome. But I want to end by telling you that there is a positive energy and a commitment and that students are enjoying learning and there is a focus in classrooms that would make all of you happy. And I would be happy to put my child in that school. And I'm happy to say that I can see that in the next year, we will build on the success that has been laid. We were only two points away from meeting every single index, and I see no reason why we shouldn't continue in that vein. And now, if the board has any questions?
Thank you, Dr. Hill. I'd like to move to the public comment portion and then allow the board to make comments, if that's okay, so that we can hear from the public. Are there any public comments? Does anyone like to speak on the presentation that was just given on McAuliffe Middle School? Okay, thank you. Comments from the board members? Mr. Rice?
Thank you. Madam President, and Dr. Hill, thank you for a very informative report. I would like to thank Mary Brewster also for her leadership role. I visited Krista McAuliffe in January and I found Mrs. Brewster was running a very tight ship there. So thank you very much for working so hard. And the positive atmosphere that Dr. Hill is talking about comes from you, Mrs. Brewster. And I would also like to acknowledge and thank Dr. Rodriguez for her role, who has a passion for making sure all of our children receive a quality education. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rice. Mrs. James?
Well, thank you, Mr. Rice. I would like to echo Mr. Rice's comments and thank you for your hard work, Mrs. Brewster, and your leadership on Krista McAuliffe campus. And I have one question for Dr. Hill, and that is, are the standards staying the same? The state's standards staying the same this year, or is the target rising from the state? Do you understand what I'm asking you?
We anticipate that the standards will remain the same, but there will be fewer questions on some of the tests. Therefore, each question will carry more weight, a shorter test.
So that's good and bad because it might be raising the stakes even a little bit more for that time. Okay, thank you for that. And thank you for the very clear presentation, and I'm excited about the path that McAuliffe Middle School is on, and we're looking forward to hearing good things about it come summertime.
Mr. Burden?
I also wanted to say thank you very much for all your hard work. Once again, echoing what Mrs. James said, I look forward to the future, our future successes. Thank you.
Mr. George?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, just echoing my colleagues here, I was there at the thirtieth anniversary Saturday, and I, the excitement you're talking about, I felt it. So thank you, Ms. Brewster, and also Dr. Rodriguez. And I see that, and last year I went there, one day, they had no power. And still that excitement is, and it is coming from the leadership, and I just wanted to greatly, greatly appreciate what you all are doing. I know every day you're making a difference in those children's life. Thank you.
Ms. Helliger?
I guess I'll chime in as well. You know, one of the most exciting things is not only the work that you all are doing is evident, but the mere fact that we missed the mark the last time by two percent, and I'm going to second what you just said earlier. I have all confidence in this group that we're going to make the mark next time. So just keep doing what you're doing and striving for excellence for all of our kids. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Helliger. Okay, go ahead.
Tosin, at the workshop, Mr. Rosenthal had requested some information about class size, and I promised that I would provide that when we presented tonight, and I didn't want to put that into the hearing information, but I would like to answer his question if we have time for that.
Sure, go ahead.
Okay. Very quickly, our regular staffing for middle schools is twenty-five to one. At McAuliffe, it's twenty-four to one, and Mr. Spears was nice enough to give three additional staffing allocations on top of that. So the class size overall at Krista McAuliffe for the core subjects looks very good. The electives are a little bit larger, and that's typical of all of our schools because the principals tend to put more staff into the core curriculum. You will find that there are some classes, for example, in social studies, there's one section that has thirty students in it, but that same teacher has classes of fourteen and seventeen. And when you see that kind of variation, it's because of the scheduling matrix. Sometimes we have to run the numbers up a little bit one period because of things that teachers are teaching or other subjects that students are taking in order to meet their needs. But I will be providing those exact numbers and ratios. The numbers do look good, and where they're high, it is because of scheduling conflicts that students have. It's not across the board. And they're very few and far between.
Thank you, Dr. Hill. We appreciate that information. We look forward to getting those numbers from you. And thank you, Mr. Spears, for adding staff. I'm sure that they appreciate you for that. Thank you, guys, for being here. Mrs. Brewster, keep up the good work. We're really proud of where things are headed, so thank you, guys. Okay, moving on to our next information item, the district financial report for the quarter ending September thirtieth, two thousand and sixteen. Dr. Dupree?
Yes, ma'am. This is our typical practice. We've provided this to the board, but we don't have a formal presentation, but we are open to hearing any questions and responding to any questions the board might have.
Are there questions from the board members? Mrs. James?
Yes, I have a couple of questions. I am looking in the, on the, in the capital fund, capital projects fund revenue expenditure sheet, we've got a large expense, it looks like, for facilities, maintenance, and operation. Is that things that have broken, or maybe someone can explain what that is?
So you're looking on page seven? Is that right?
Unfortunately, the pages are not numbered.
But that's the ten point eight million dollar number?
Yes.
Okay. So that, yeah, that's page seven.
Or maybe they are, and I don't see it. Sorry, yes, they are.
But that's, that's done on a per-function basis, so I don't have that detail handy, but I could certainly pull that down and send it to you.
Well, I'm just looking at it because it's a big difference from last year, so I was trying to understand what that, why that was.
Okay.
And then I guess my second question on that page is down in, looking at the, the fund balance recap, the, can you explain the fourteen million dollars for the two thousand and fourteen bond? Is that money that we've used but not incurred debt yet? Is that?
That's correct. That's money that we spent on bond two thousand and fourteen that we have not incurred debt on yet. That's right.
Okay. And then do we still have monies? Well, I guess we don't have any money. The two thousand and seven is money that is...
Yeah, there was money that was issued some time ago, that's right.
Right, and, okay. So that balances that out, is what I was kind of gathering from what that looked like. Okay, and then my, my last question, I think, is on the, on the health insurance fund. Could you speak to that? That number also looked a little bit bigger than last year.
No, it definitely is, and it's reflective of the trends that we had. Hopefully, November and December will be, will be better months, but we'll probably end up needing to make a transfer out of the workers' comp fund to help with that while we're waiting for our changes that take effect January two thousand and seventeen to take hold.
So you think this is reflective of a cha, because we are going forward with changing our healthcare system?
No, I, I, just the overall utilization has just trended higher, and we have had more catastrophic cases. But hopefully, whenever, and we've had a lot of folks join the Kelsey Plan and some of the other things that we're putting into place, hopefully that'll help turn the fund around, starting in, starting in January, when the new plan year is effective.
Okay, so you wouldn't, you, you're hopeful that the trend will change, but?
Yes.
It's something we need to watch.
Oh, most definitely.
Okay. All right, thank you. That's the end of my questions.
Thank you, Mrs. James. We have no additional questions. We will move on to the facilities lifecycle and preventative maintenance update.
Yes, ma'am. One of the things that we've talked to the board quite a bit about in the last year or so has been on the condition of the district's facilities, and we certainly do have an active bond program, but there's a number of maintenance items that we refer to generally as lifecycle and preventative maintenance items that, some of which are included in the bond, but there are many things that are not. And so Oscar Perez has been working to develop a plan, and he just wants to give the board an update on our work in that area. Oscar?
Thank you, Dr. Dupree, Ms. Tosin, members of the board. What I want to do is talk to you a little bit about what I have found so far, being interim and looking at our facilities. And so wanted to start off right at the beginning with, with our guiding principles, because if we don't understand our guiding principles, then really, we can't go forward. We literally have, we have District Goal Three, Priority Two, and District Goal Five, Priority One, which are really the guiding principles that fit my area of responsibility. And with, with that... (coughing) There it is, okay. Sorry. With that, we come down to our facilities maintenance goals. And these goals, based on our guiding principles, are to maintain a safe and healthy learning and working environment for students and staff, to maximize our building efficiency, and to protect Fort Bend ISD's capital investments. Okay, so why does maintenance matter? So there's, there's plenty of studies that tell us that school conditions have a direct effect on student achievement and teacher performance. And these involve air quality, lighting, condition of the facility and furniture. And also, we also have studies that conclude that well-maintained and well-ventilated buildings sustain the students and staff comfort, concentration, and success. And I know that's evident because the minute that we lose an air conditioner at a building, a cooling tower, whatever, you know, the calls immediately start coming in. Instruction is disrupted, and I understand that, and we jump on it as quickly as possible. But it doesn't matter how quickly we try to do that, there's already a disruption within the school day. And the other thing is responsible maintenance of district facilities demonstrate fiscal responsibility and use of our limited resources, and that's one of the main things. I mean, we don't have unlimited resources, so we need to go ahead and make sure that what we're doing, we do within our means, basically within, you know, what we have in The maintenance spectrum, and this is from the National Center of Educational Statistics, talks about five categories, and on here you only see four. But the reason you see four is because the first category is no maintenance at all. And obviously, that's not what we're doing. We are doing some maintenance. But what we're, we're doing, what I have found so far, is that we're doing a lot of emergency or response maintenance. You know, things are failing, we're responding to it, we're getting them corrected, but it's, you know, it's already occurred. We're doing some routine maintenance, but, you know, once again, not to the level that we need to get that done. We're doing preventive maintenance. That is definitely, and you'll see in a slide in a little bit, not what we are concentrating on, but that is a change that we will be making. And then we, we're doing some predictive maintenance, and that's based on what we're doing with the bond. We, you know, there were some systems that we predicted were failing, we're getting those replaced. But the idea here is to go ahead and always be looking at the predictive maintenance. The reason being, and to simplify it, is always look at it as when you go to buy a set of tires for your car. When you go to buy a set of tires, you can buy a thirty thousand mile tire, forty thousand, you know, sixty thousand. It all depends on that initial investment that you want to make. Whichever one you buy predicts when you're going to get your next set of tires. The preventive part of it is to keep the right air in the tires, to go ahead and rotate them, when you're supposed to rotate them, to be able to get to that predictive point. That's what I'm striving with our folks to go ahead and get to with our systems. We, we need to be able to know that as we finish projects with bond two thousand and fourteen, we have a good predictive model that shows when things need to be replaced. And then we also need to go ahead and make sure that we start doing preventive maintenance on that equipment based on the manufacturer's recommendations and intervals. So on a typical day, you have two types of maintenance, which are operational maintenance and you have facilities maintenance. And the operational's are as simple as just opening the school, checking for vandalism, you know, identifying any safety or maintenance needs, the normal cleaning, the mowing, those are, those are just operational things that, that happen on a daily basis. On the facilities side, we, we should be doing our routine and preventive maintenance for, for all of these systems. But what I have found that we're doing is we're, the one that we're tackling the most, not on prevent, on preventive, but on emergency, is our HVAC systems. We, we are having some failures of these systems, and so we're trying to identify right now why that is occurring, because I, what I'm seeing, we're having some premature failures. why that is occurring, because I, what I'm seeing, we're having some premature failures. I, I'm pretty certain that as I dig a little further, what I'm going to find is that it's based on not doing the proper preventive maintenance, but at this point, I just know that we, we do have some failures. So when I started looking at our key performance indicators, and this is basically how we see, how we're doing against our peers, we're utilizing the School Dude System to, to go ahead and track all of our work orders and everything, and that's a very powerful system that is utilized by many districts all across the nation. And what I found in my initial look at this is that there's three months that we have the highest number of work orders that are being input into the system, and those three months are May, July, and August. And even though I haven't been able to just dig really deep and analyze it all, what I do feel from my years of experience is that the May surge is based on the things that the campus needs, the work orders that they want to get accomplished while they're gone for the summer. So there's that surge that comes in. The, the August ones, which are even higher, is the fact that they get back and stuff hasn't been completed, is, that's my initial analysis that I see, and so they go ahead and input additional work orders, because they see that, you know, the work wasn't done, and they still need, the need is still there. And the only reason for July being the load is, is because that's the time of year that they're really away, you know, from the campus. But I, I need to get in here and look at it a little closer and get some additional data, because I, the other part of this is that I, I do not feel that we're utilizing the School Dude System to its capability, and I also am not certain yet if we're actually putting in valid information. We, we need, I need to be able to validate, you know, because, you know, if you put garbage in, you get garbage out, and so we need to have good data that's going into the system, because it, it is very robust, and we want to be able to utilize it, because it, it measures us against our peer districts. And, you know, that's the way that I could, you know, in the future, come back to you and report on how we're doing. What I have found is that we, we've only completed approximately 922 preventive maintenance work orders. And if you saw in the previous slide, we had 41,000, we averaged about 41,000 work orders. So this, this tells me one of two things. It tells me that either we're, we're not logging in the information correctly, or we're not, you know, doing preventive maintenance. Based on the fact that we're having some failures on some of our major systems, I think that we have not been doing our preventive maintenance as we should. But when you look at this, what this slide is telling us is that the top 20 districts are doing at least 40% of their work orders as, as preventive maintenance. We don't fare too well. We're, we're down at less than 2%, and so we definitely need to improve, and, and we will be improving. The, the ratio also from our corrective to basically reactive maintenance work orders is also extremely low, 2% is, is what we're looking at there. Once again, the top 20 districts, 51% is where they lie as far as preventive maintenance in relation to just your normal routine maintenance going on. So once again, just a tremendous amount of improvement that is required in this area. So our next step's long-term. We need to develop and implement a preventive maintenance plan for all water and air crew chillers. And the reason that I'm tackling this, you know, as one of our first things, is because that is where the, the biggest bang for our buck is. We, we have systems there that cost a lot of money on the onset, and if we don't maintain them, then they're just deteriorating, and when they fail, they cost us a lot of money. So that's one of the things that, that we need to go ahead and get done quickly, followed by rooftop units. We, we have a number of rooftop units, and going back, we, we have in the district approximately 183 chillers that, that we operate on a daily basis. And, and of that, it's, they're about 33,000 tons, which equates to about 6,000 homes, if they, if you look at just a five-ton, you know, unit in your home. So, I mean, these are massive amounts of, of equipment that we need to go ahead and make sure we're, you know, we're doing our due diligence on, and so that's why this is the area that I think we need to plan. And then, then the next thing is that we actually have to establish a predictive maintenance process for all of our systems, and that means, you know, predict when we're going to paint again, predict when we're going to replace floor, predict when we're going to replace lighting, all of these things have to be done. But our biggest bang right now that I feel, and the biggest need, is that we need to attack these chillers, because we, we have been having some failures. On the short term, what we've done is, last month, y'all approved Green and Sustainable Services, and we've already started a cleaning of our cooling towers, and we've done Settler's Way and Sartasha Middle School, they're, they're complete already, and we already have a plan to move forward and get some more done. We're going to be doing quite a few during the Thanksgiving holiday also, to go ahead and get those, those cleaned, because they, they have not been maintained properly, and so we're, we're going to be doing that. Also, the, on the short term, is we, we have to identify the cause of the chiller failures at these particular schools, and we, you know, these systems range from 14 to 18 years. They, they should not be failing. These are systems that should be going 25 to 30 years, but yet, we, we're having some failures. And, you know, once again, I don't have my finger on it, but I've already engaged staff, because we have to find out. We need to find out exactly what's happened, get this corrected, and then make sure that we don't have those same mistakes happening in, in other campuses. We, we need to make sure that we stay ahead of that curve. The other is, I need to hire an executive director for that position. We've already interviewed, and I plan on bringing a recommendation to the board in December, so that we can get someone in there that can assist me, so that we can move forward. And then, there was a plan that came to the board back in 2012. I've started looking into this, but I, I need to analyze it. The plan from first blush, when I look at it, was a good plan, but I really don't know right at this moment where we are within that plan. I, I don't, I'm not certain how much of it was done. I know that there were some things done, but there's, there was some hiring components and everything that I'm, you know, muddling through right now to, to see where we are, and then I will, we'll come back and report back to you. You know, on first blush, I think that as we move forward, it's going to be a combination of what was brought to you in 2012, and what I've presented tonight, to go ahead and, and get the, you know, the district moving forward, get on a preventive and a predictive maintenance plan, so that we can go ahead and get ahead of this game and not have these outages that, that, you know, we're, we're having. And even though it, we're not having massive failures, if you just have one, it's one too many, because it's, it's, you know, the person that's being affected is, you know, the, the one that's having the hardest time trying to, you know, teach, trying to maintain, you know, order with, with kids, and, you know, have some learning. And in some of these, it's been repetitive, not necessarily for the same issue, but we've had an electrical issue that's a CenterPoint issue, that then caused a problem with, you know, systems not coming back up and all. We've already reached out, we met with CenterPoint, we've had a real good meeting this past week, and we look forward to hopefully getting some positive feedback on some of the things that they're doing. I know that they're upgrading some of the, their systems to, to try to go ahead and make them more reliable. And then, we're needing to go ahead also and look at our systems and see what we can do to keep our systems from failing whenever power goes down, it comes back, and it's now single-phase instead of three-phase, and our systems try to come on. There's, there's ways to mitigate that. I'm looking into what, what do we have within our schools right now that maybe are not operating as they should? And then, where we don't, I want to be able to come back with a plan to say, we need to install some systems that will go ahead and prevent some of these failures that we've had. Because once, you know, these systems are designed to operate on three phases, and when you come back up with two, there's a lot of times that it, it causes failures. That concludes my presentation, and I'm, I'll take any questions that y'all may have.
Thank you, Mr. Perez. We appreciate the presentation. Do we have questions from the trustees? Mr. Rice?
Thank you, Mr. Perez, for a very informative presentation. Thank you for your candor. You know, our district has grown a lot over the years. When my wife and I first moved here, we had one high school. We probably had 30 campuses, and, and we have many more today. And for 21 and a half years, we outsourced the HVAC preventive maintenance to different contractors, and only brought it in-house in 2012, which is a pretty tall order, because we had no processes and procedures to follow, and those had to be developed. So I know that you and, and Mr. Moore and others will make sure we have a good plan in place, and have every confidence in, in you doing this. It's really important that we, that we do this, as you know, and I, I appreciate your comments about the preventive maintenance. But do we also have a long-term capital improvement plan? Because as you said, your example of the tires, we know if we bought tires that are going to last 50,000 miles, if we're driving 10,000 miles a year, we're going to have to replace them in a year or five. So I think you said we have, how many chillers do we have in the district?
Approximately 183.
183, so it'd be, it'd be great to have a database that could tell us, in the next two years, how many of those chillers will reach the end of their useful life expectancy and need to be replaced, and their approximate cost for each one. I mean, you can, you can maintain them all you want to, but they, no matter how good the maintenance is, they won't last beyond, much beyond their predicted life. So that might be something, you probably have considered that already, I'd just like to lift that up to you.
Yes, sir, and we, we have our maps database that we've been keeping up, and what I'm doing now is just, we've already put a team together to verify the facility side of it, to make sure where we are. I know that, that in designing construction, the database is up to date as we're going in, that's been kept up, but I haven't had a chance to get into the facility side, so I've developed a team, we're going in there, going to attack it, so we can have that data here in the very near future, because we're going to have to utilize that as we go forward with another bond.
And we have a new water treatment company that's working on the cooling towers. Do you think you could ask them if we have water meters on the makeup water that's filling the tower, and maybe even on the discharge side, that we could tie into the building automation system and build in some protocols, so if we see that we have excessive water discharge, we know we're going to empty that chemical barrel prematurely?
Yes, sir, and I have checked into that, and we do not have meters in, in this contract, but what we do have is, they, they do have a, a system that's tied, so that we can have the real-time data, that will go ahead and show us the flow, but it's not actually water meters. But we are looking into that and identifying if there are some areas where we do have them in place at this time.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Rice. Ms. Heliger?
Yeah, I had some, very similar questions to what Mr. Rice had, because in my role, I call this an asset management system that's, that's needed here. One of the concerns that I have is that, to your, to your candor, around the 2%, KPIs for the maintenance and the corrective maintenance, especially with majority of our work orders that are coming in during the latter, that middle part of the year, that May, July, and August timeframe that you stated. So my concern is, you know, the capacity to get the work done, do we have, you know, the resources available to do the work? And what kind of system do we have in place, or I'm assuming that we need to get one in place, where we're not waiting until May, July, and August to do 2% of the work, but we're doing the 2%, you know, trying to get to that 51% throughout the school year, where we have some type of checklist or something like that, that we're, that we're utilizing throughout the whole year for, for those schools? Because what it sounded like to me, I think you said, is that they, they, they put the orders in in May, and I'm not sure who's doing that, is that the principal, or who's really the driver of those orders? Or is it someone coming from, from maintenance to look at those items? Who's the driver of those, majority of those work orders?
The majority are driven from the campus level, but there's, just for clarification, there's approximately 41,000 work orders average that occur throughout the year. So there's work orders coming in throughout the year. These three months are kind of the spike out of those 41 that, that, you know, are brought in, but there's work orders that are in, come in from the campus, or that are generated from our end, that happen throughout the, throughout the year. To answer as far as your capacity, no. When you're getting the amount of work orders that we're getting in that three-month period, you, you cannot get tho-, all of those complete. You know, even if they're extremely minor, just the logistics of getting, you know, to all those campuses and trying to get that complete, that's, that's not the way to do business.
So are we outsourcing those?
No, ma'am, at this point, they're not getting completed, is, is where we are at this point.
So then, in August, we basically, I think I heard you say, that in August, the work orders, really, some of them are repetitive work orders, work orders that just didn't get finished completely, right? So then, that kind of messes the numbers up that you're showing here, right?
Yes, ma'am, because there's, there's times that then, you know, our internal staff has to look and see if that's a work order that was already submitted, and then some, you know, submit it again, you know, for the same work or whatever, so it takes, it takes time. And the, the main thing that we have to do is, we have to, we have to build credibility. And we, we need for the campus principals to understand that whenever they submit a work order, that the first thing that happens is that they, they get communication back. Because if they don't hear anything, then it's their assumption it's going to get done. When it doesn't get done, then they're highly upset, and I totally understand that. So we have to communicate, and sometimes the communication is that whatever their request is cannot be done. But I can tell you that they would much rather hear that, and, and the reason why, than they would to just have it sitting out in limbo. And that's kind of what, what I'm seeing that we've, we've kind of had. We, we have not really given the feedback that they require. One of the things that we're already doing with, with Greg Lookavall, and David, and, and Robert Marsh, is we, we're already looking at putting as much information in that system about the work order as possible before we close it out, so that that way, the campus principal has the ability to pull up that work order and actually see something besides closed. Because that's what I've found in a lot of them, that, you know, when you look at it, it says "closed." Well, was it closed because it work was done? Was it closed because it wasn't? I mean, I don't know. So that's, we're, we're having weekly meetings, we're, we're just need, we need to put good data in to be able to, for me to be able to bring you a good report with, with data that I feel confident, confident in.
Okay, so I, I definitely understand that there's a lot of work for us to do here. I guess I'm concerned with, what is our roadmap to get some of these things done? What are we, maybe if you can come back to us a little later on, what's, what's the plan, and what targets you're, I understand you're going to, you're looking at the chillers and whatnot initially, but what are some of your ma-, major targets, and, you know, what's the roadmap to get some of these things done? Are we, are we having some, I know we, we, we tend to rely on our people on our campuses, our administrators, to do a lot of the work orders development, creation, but are we doing regular inspections and reviews, and do we have like a, have a, a minimum maintenance level that we require for all of our schools, that someone is walking the ground periodically to make sure that our, our asset is, is meeting the minimum requirements on a regular basis? What, do we do anything like that?
Yes, ma'am, we, we do, but it's not really documented. There's not a system, an SOP, and there's not a system operation procedure there, and that's what we need to develop. We need to go ahead and, and get that in place, so that we can, we can go ahead and be able to document, demonstrate, and then come back with, with good information, you know, based on, on our system. Like I said, we have a great system to go ahead and do this, and, and at the same time, I want to say, there's, there's a lot, of those 41,000 work orders, there's a lot of work that's being done in this district.
Oh, I'm sure.
I mean, there's a lot of work being done. But, but there, you know, we still need to improve, and, and there's target areas where we really need to improve, and one, one being the chillers, because they're a very high-dollar item. Our chillers, our cooling towers, and those things are very high-dollar, and we, we need to go ahead and attack that as quickly as possible. But, but on any given day, we have good people that are, that are doing a lot of work.
Oh, I definitely agree, and I just, you know, definitely will promote, you know, us getting those systems in place sooner than later, for sure, and how, and how, as we, as the board and as a district, can support you in that. That's why I would like to see some type of high-level roadmap of what, what are, what are the plans- That's why I would like to see some type of high-level roadmap of what are the plans and what needs to be done, just so that we can support you with implementation. I know when Mr. Moore got on the board, I mean, not on the board, but when he came on, one of the things that I had brought to his attention was, you know, we had holes in windows, we had graffiti on certain walls, and because of capacity and resource availability, that's why I'm asking you those questions, is we, you know, they weren't getting done. And so if it wasn't for people taking pictures and bringing it to people, the district's attention, they would have gotten fixed later versus sooner. So I definitely would look forward to seeing a roadmap of the plan to get us to where we need to be, so that we can see how we can support you and how we can fund those resources, looking at Steve, and since Kermit likes to give people, to Kermit, to do that.
Thank you, Ms. Heliger. Do we have any other questions? Okay, we'll move on to Item D, the 1617 District Strategic Plan Update.
Yes, ma'am. Beth is going to provide a very brief discussion on that. We provided the board a brief written document last week, but she's just going to kind of set the stage for information that's going to be shared with the board during the coming few months. Beth?
Thank you, Dr. Dupree. I heard brief, I will be brief. This evening, I am going to provide a high-level overview for you of the strategic plan and kind of where we are at this time. At the end of quarter one, there was, we were successful in the Curriculum and Instruction Department in developing and implementing the curriculum checkpoints in the core subject areas for grades three through 12, and you will be hearing some of that data and information this evening from Dr. Faust as he presents the data on the curriculum checkpoints. And what we have done moving forward is built in opportunities at board meetings and through board updates to provide information and ongoing updates about strategic planning efforts in the district. And you just heard one from Oscar, as he talked about lifecycle and maintenance. And what is, he's going to be working on to bring to completion in December is an aggressive plan for the maintenance and preventative maintenance plan. So just know that as we monitor the progress in each of the departments through the strategic plan, we've also built in what's coming up next to provide to you, so you can have a glimpse into what we are accomplishing. So moving forward in December, I'll bring to you the data dashboard for the district strategic plan, which will give you an opportunity to see an actual dashboard that will begin to show percentage complete for, at the goal level, and then to be able to drill down a little bit further. Dr. Faust will bring to you an update on the curriculum audit and an update to the assessment plan. And then in January, well, staff will be sharing information about special education co-teach, and we will celebrate Police Department accreditation. We look forward to that. And in February, you will receive an update on college career readiness, literacy intervention, an annual enrollment review, an update on our Edge and IR campuses, and an update on the leadership development strategy. So that's my brief, high-level overview for you, if you have any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Martinez. We appreciate that. It was the goal here to give the board sort of that roadmap of when we're going to be hearing about what items that are within our strategic plan, so thank you for presenting that for us. Do we have any questions generally about this item? Mrs. James?
Well, just, I see a couple items related to curriculum, but I'm just wondering if we can get updated on the curriculum build-out plan and where that, and that doesn't, I don't know when that would fit, or maybe it's a piece of something that Dr. Faust is thinking of talking about, but I'd just like to keep pushing on that because it's the tool that everybody needs to use for the teaching and learning, which is really important.
Yes, ma'am, we have, we've done extensive work. The team has been working very diligently and a number of people engaged, and we have a report that we can send in this week's update. And when I say report, really, it's a very succinct plan with some supporting documents. It's not more than 10 pages that I think would give you a good idea of where we are on work.
That sounds, that sounds great. I'd love to see that.
Thank you, Dr. Faust and Mrs. James. Any other questions? Okay, thank you. And our last item on information is our student performance update.
Yes, ma'am. As Beth already alluded to, we know one of the board's top priorities, one of the top five priorities, is our performance measurement. And so that's, we've made a lot of progress toward developing a few dashboards this year, but Mark tonight is going to share some of the data that will ultimately, I guess, populate dashboards. We're not ready to share a dashboard yet, but we do want to start getting the board's feedback on data. And you, I think Mark plans to say this when he's talking, but I think I want, it needs to be said a couple of times, because we gave you a binder last week, and you've sent us a few questions, and we're happy to engage with those questions. But I think it's very important for you to understand, at this point, this is a first pass of this data. We have not studied it in detail, we have not analyzed it in detail to identify correlations or anything. We're just building the foundation to really start using the data as a management team and to provide the board good governance data. So with that mindset, I'll turn it over to Mark to go ahead and share some of the work that we've been doing.
Thank you, Dr. Dupree, President Hassan, and Board members. So Dr. Dupree just talked through my first slide. Thank you for laughing. But all kidding aside, that's exactly right. This is our first step, as we know that the end game will be dynamic district dashboards. We're providing you with static reports at this time that we're still working through. And I want to thank a number of departments for coming together, the Curriculum Department, Department of School Leadership, Instructional Technology with Longfam and Mitzi Patan and her team, Matt Fraser. A lot of folks worked together to bring this together for you for the first time. So we recognize too that there will be improvement. We are grateful for the early feedback that we've already received, and we know that the next pass will be improved. So thank you. And this is, as Beth said similarly, a high-level overview of the binder that you all received. Hopefully, it was something that was engaging to you and easy to access. And again, any feedback you can give us to help us make that a better product, we will take that gladly. So there are seven categories of the reports that you received. We broke the information down based on information we thought would be good reports on student progress and items that we feel help us to know if we're providing great opportunities for student learning. So the first is called the grade band summary. I like to affectionately call it grade distribution, and there are several pages there we'll go through in a moment. The second category is pre-AP and AP participation. That's number of students that are engaged at the secondary level in pre-AP and AP coursework, that advanced coursework. The third category is checkpoint data, and those are our checkpoint systems that are renovated, they're new for this year, and we've got our Term One checkpoint data, so those that we did give up until October 14th are reported here. PEEMs attendance is our percentage, what we commonly call ADA, or average daily attendance, and so that's percentages at the district level, that high-level overview. Absences by grade group, or what I like to call, and unfortunately have to call, excessive absences, and excessive unexcused absences are reported here for you. Those are important to track. And discipline data, another key indicator of student success within our system. And then finally, CTE participation, a number of students that are engaged in those career and technology education opportunities. So those are the seven categories. These slides, I will tell you as you're peeking at them, are not meant for you to be able to see the data on them, so I just wanted to say that in advance, that I just wanted to show them as illustrations. Most of them, you'll see the page number, so that if you're in your binder, if you have your binder with you, you can flip to those page numbers, or if you want to make a specific note as I'm talking through these and giving you the overview, you can make a reference to a particular page number. And if it's not there and you need to, just ask, and I can tell you the particular page number. So for illustrative purposes only, the first, the grade distribution set of slides, basically, the first one is a district summary. It's a high-level overview, and we wanted you to see that for all of the elementary grades two through five, and in the star-tested secondary courses, we have grade distributions, and they're banded together, As and Bs, Cs and Ds, and then failures. Obviously, we want to have the lowest possible failure rate, we want to see as much green as we possibly can. But the first slide is a broad district-level overview of that coursework. Then it becomes more specific, and you'll notice the pattern of broad to specific throughout the reports in each of the categories, so that's intentional. And our, I'm sorry. Our second set of slides, it has to do with by grade level. So at your elementary, your middle school, and your high school level, for those courses that I mentioned a moment ago, what are the overall grade distributions and the grade bands? So again, not meant for you to see the details here, I would refer to your binder, but then we go into greater level of detail by listing the grade level and the course, and it's elementary, middle, and high school again, but it's the grade level and the course that we are providing the data for the particular grade distribution. So you begin to see patterns emerge, again, at the district level, of how our students in all of our third-grade math classes across the district are doing with regard to grade distribution, your As, Bs, Cs, Ds, and Fs. So the next category is pre-AP and AP participation. In this category, we're measuring the secondary-level student distribution by ethnicity, and that's the column on the right. Oh, not the right button. So this column on the right is measuring, or this is the ethnicity of the secondary-level students, so that's middle and high school combined, so that percentage is the number of African-American students, Hispanic students, Asian students, et cetera. The legend is on the right-hand side of each of these pages. And so on page six, for pre-AP and AP participation, on the left-hand column, you'll see the middle school and high schools together. What percentage of each ethnicity is engaged in at least one pre-AP or AP course? The next two slides in this report group have to do with specifically by high school and specifically by middle school. So again, you have all of the high school students, the ethnic distribution for high school students only, and then the percentage of participation by that ethnicity in pre-AP or AP courses, at least one pre-AP or AP course. Same for middle school here, so it's specific, so we gave you the broad or the overall high-level overview of the district, and then we get a little more specific at each of the grade levels for participation in AP and pre-AP courses. The next category was the checkpoint data. So we had our first round of checkpoints during Term One, so this starts on page nine of your binder. The first, again, is the broad district-level view, and it offers the percentage of students that met the standard, I'm sorry, let me restate that, the percentage correct. It's the percentage correct for students on each of the grade-level tests. So the key piece there from a district perspective is, where are students scoring? How, what percentage are they getting correct across the board? The next level is a little more detailed, where we have by each grade level, an overall percentage correct for each of the tests, but then more specifically by student groups, and I would say our ethnic groups, as well as limited English proficient, so our ethnicities, or limited English proficient, our special ed students, and our economically disadvantaged students. Those are all either federal or state accountability student groups, and so that's why they're represented on the, on these slides. And I would tell you that we really pay attention to the data trends in each of the grade level and subject-level tests as are distributed here. Also want to note on these slides that you see a number rather than a percent. It's the raw score, and it'll say that in the title at the bar at the top, but it's the raw score of how many students got correct. And if you look at the top-left corner of the graph, it'll tell you what the total number of questions. For example, on this slide, there are 16 total questions, and it'll show you what each student group performed on the average number of correct. There are approximately 14 slides in this group, so there's a total of 40 slides of information or 40 pages of reports. This particular group has the largest number because we break down each grade-level assessment that we've given so far as of October 14th, and by the different designations, either raw score or percentage. So the PEEMs attendance was, there was, we got a great question as to why the bars are so dramatic and why the number difference is so small. So we intentionally measured these down to the hundredth, and the reason why was we wanted you to be able to see the differences between the student groups, and again, these are by ethnicity. When you observe them by the ones or the tens, it looks like a straight line. Everyone's really close, but when you break it down to the hundreds, you can see the breaks and the differences between the different student groups, and where we need to focus our energies on ensuring that we have the highest levels of attendance. So attendance affects us in our average daily attendance and our funding, but equally important, it also impacts our district with regard to accountability and the distinction report. So attendance is a significant component of all of the distinctions. So we want to really make sure that, well, and most importantly, if students aren't in the seats, then they can't learn. So we really pay, give time and energy to attendance rating. So we listed it by ethnicity, but we also listed it by overall campus level. You're probably not surprised to see that when the students are younger, you start to see those patterns, and as they get a little bit older, the attendance tends to decline. So not an altogether surprising category. And the next one is our tough one. This is excessive absences, or students with 10 or more unexcused absences. And so we've listed this a couple of different ways. I showed two of the five graphs, or two of the four graphs that are in this report, but this is K-12 enrollment and the number of times, and what I really like about this report for you, and something that we can do better on some of the other reports, is it shows both percentage of the student population and the raw numbers. And so we're going to try to provide that, I'll show you in a moment, on our discipline slides, where we want to add the percentages in with the raw numbers. We're going to, again, try to improve some of these reports. But here you look at the overall student enrollment, this is K-12 on the column on the left, and then we show you the numbers, the raw numbers, of students that have 10 or more unexcused absences, and this is in T1, in our first term. So those are not insignificant numbers. They very much matter, and they tell us where our work is. So that's that first graph that I wanted to point out. The next, we show by grade level. So after we show the district aggregate, we break it down, K-12 on each of the next slides, and this is just the high school, it shows you your ninth-grade students, and again, it's by ethnicity. It shows you the total number and percentage of ninth-grade students that had 10 or more absences by ethnicity, and it shows you the total number of students in that student population. So a very informative graph, and again, informing our work and where we need to be focusing our energies with regards to attendance. Our next group of reports is the discipline. So this category is the discipline data. I mentioned a second ago that we're offering raw numbers. One key thing to point out about these raw numbers is that these are instances of students that are being placed in ISS is the first column, OSS is the second column, and DAP is the third column. So ISS and OSS and DAP in that order. So you might have one student that's placed in ISS three different times for two days. It's not total number of days on the screen, and it's not the student only one time. Each time, there is a discipline entry coded into Skyward as our information system that is PEEMs reportable, and all of these are PEEMs reportable, each one of those counts as an instance. So we're sharing with you the total number of instances by ethnicity for the district-level discipline placements for each of these different three placements. There are several slides in this report, as you can see the bar at the top. We break it out by economically disadvantaged, special education, and LEP. Again, those are accountability student groups, they're measured by accountability, so if they're not in the classroom, then we're concerned about their education being impacted, and so that's why we're tracking this data and sharing this with you. Another slide that I would share is the discipline summary by school level. So we have at the elementary level what our ISS, OSS, or out-of-school suspension, and district alternative education placements are, at the middle school level, and then the high school level. So again, just, I just wanted to point out that you can see some trend data, and at times, this trend data is a little bit surprising when you look at the different levels. Okay, the last category that we're sharing with you all is the CTE participation, Career and Technology Education. So this is number of students, raw number of students, and again, we hope to be able to come back and add percentages, but raw number of students, and this is by grade level. So when you look at the colors, I would encourage you to take a look at the legend on the right-hand side. So it starts with the high school on the left and the middle school on the right. I want to point out that you'll see very little-to-no numbers of sixth-grade students. It's the way our programming is set up, our students really begin to explore their CTE options in seventh and eighth grade. CTE options in seventh and eighth grade. That may change sometime in the future, but currently, we require a fine arts class in sixth grade when they have their four-core PE and fine arts in sixth grade, and there's limited number of elective opportunities beyond those. So at this time, we really don't have CTE represented at the sixth-grade level. If you look on the left-hand side, you see ninth grade. My pointer's, my pointer's done, guys. I'm sorry. There it is. Okay. You see ninth grade listed, and it just works, it works down, nine, 10, 11, 12, and the total numbers that are engaging in at least one CTE course. So this is not to say that there are students that have interest, and they're involved in two CTE courses simultaneously, but that's current enrollment in CTE courses, one or more. And that concludes the slides. Again, I would point out that we have great intention to improve those. We welcome your feedback. I think I answered a couple of the questions that we received. One I would add that I meant to say during the checkpoints is, we do not yet have any FERB data on standard deviations regarding our checkpoints. We just ran, you know, finished or completed our first round, and we're currently moving in to our second round. We found some ways that we can improve our systemic approach with ensuring high-quality checkpoints, and so we know that the spring semester is going to be better than the first semester as we're implementing that new system. But we do not have standard deviation data on the checkpoints. Other questions?
Thank you, Dr. Faust. We appreciate your presentation. Do we have questions from the trustees? Mr. Rice?
Thank you, Dr. Faust. A very nice, informative presentation. And the next time I see Mr. A.J. Craybill, I shall inform him of your good work and ask, hopefully in a manner that he will take note of, and ask that you email a copy of your PowerPoint presentation to him. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rice. Additional questions? Mrs. James?
I'll just say, thank you very much. It was very informative. I love the numbers. I loved reading it all, and I'm looking forward to the, you know, Take Two.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Okay, I think that concludes this portion of our agenda. We will now convene in closed session under the Texas Open Meetings Act for the purpose of private consultation with the board's attorney on any and all subjects or matters authorized by law, including the sections listed in our agenda. We are now convening in closed session.